Alright, so it's nine forty, can I have a motion to come back into?
I'll make the motion. I'll start it. Come back in session.
Bowen then where?
Bowen then Jason.
Work, yes.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, carried and approved. Alright, Gene, the floor is yours now.
Mr. Mayor. One other thing I have to do.
Oh, forgot.
We will have to bid the sidewalks.
When do we, do we have to, we have to bid the trees too, correct?
Trees, I believe we don't.
No.
I don't think we ever have with the sidewalks.
Why, is it because we don't spend much on trees, is that why?
I'm guessing that's the matter, I don't know, there's an exact figure of, there's a protocol call.
Yeah, procurement policy that we have.
There is that, I know we do have to bid the sidewalks. Trees, I've never, oh, why do I have to bid trees, I guess I've ever asked that question.
Well, if we only do a couple, then they would fall below the amounts for the procurement, so that makes sense. So if we go above the...
If we go beyond that, we would have to probably put it down.
So if we go above what, is it ten thousand, I believe it is, that we have to have a bid for it?
Mm-hmm. Then there's so much at nineteen thousand nine hundred, or is it going to be fixed in one place or something?
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, that's all I look at, it does me hungry.
When will you be doing the bids for, for the sidewalk?
I don't know.
Should we do that soon, right?
Yes, yes.
Can we get that done this week, to start the process, so we can get them in, and then we can review the bid and then?
Can I give you just a little, just throw a little tidbit in here? The way that, the way that bids for the sidewalks are done, is you decide how much you're going to spend, and ask the contractors how much that'll get you. So it's kind of an opposite type.
Exactly.
It's an opposite.
Reverse.
Reverse, reverse type project.
We're going to, we're going to approximately this much, how many feet do you give it?
Okay.
And that's all, I will put it on, and I will check with, see if I can find a Google was asked it before. And I know who this quote come from, and I take it as quoted as a bid. Unless he wants to review if there's any escalation in cement, which I've taken, and probably isn't because oil went down ten cents, so there's no escalation on the chip ceiling. Actually, the price is better, so I'm taking probably cement, it's probably along that same avenue.
Okay.
But I will find out more, and I will get an exact price on what it costs to do gas and down there.
Okay. Very good, uh, was there anything else that, was there something about meters somebody said? Oh, that's, yeah.
One other thing too.
One second, Gene, sorry.
And I didn't forget, we, um, I've looked at the Leavenworth Hill, we know that the, the sidewalk nearby during the Zell's dead, it's falling in because we had a drainage problem. Fixing the drainage problem is not a problem, I still probably did that, outside be done. Um, the next question I has, do we want to put sidewalk back in there? Or do we just want to cap the existing wall, say another four inches higher, give or take, and put the railing back up and black top from the curb over and put a line in for walking? Or do we want to put sidewalk back in there?
What's cheaper you figure?
I'm quite sure probably by topping it back, it would be cheaper. If you want, I'll get prices, I'd get prices both ways. But on the opposite side of the road that needs just as much attention, I lead whack it up through here, two weeks ago, I went through the lead whacker, cleaned it up, then took a good look at it, and that's, that somewhere's a long time, somebody took a long time, and they laid sidewalk in there. Stood on the sides and there's spots where it's still in good shape, there's spots where it's gone, but if you look at that curb, the curb has slowly dropped down from the road. You're there, you're working on one side, the other side, I take it we can get it dug up, put a couple catch basins in there, and we probably could just get away with pouring a six inch wide, four inch curb, five inch curb, down there, just hold water from going over.
Mm-hmm.
Right into the catch basins, and all maybe even reach up there and put some of that brush off the banks, and it was, I believe that is our land up through there, some of that, to make it a little more presentable.
Is there, there is sidewalk on both, on both sides of Leavenworth, right?
Just the one side.
Which, uh, going up, is it on the left or on the right?
It's on the left, I believe.
Yeah, on the left, it's your left, I don't know.
On the left?
Yes.
So...
And then there's none, and then there's sidewalk again. You know, I take it that used to be a parking lot, the old Spencer, it eventually dropped there. If there were sidewalk in there one time, it's long gone and dropped off.
Well, shouldn't we have complete sidewalk for that road? Kids do go up and down the street?
Yes, yes, it's, it's like everything else, but there you go, where, where there's a few kids that travel at, and maybe one adult, to where we've got sidewalks and we've got numerous kids, numerous adults walking daily. So where do you, how do you justify the cost of putting sidewalk up through there for not much use? And not, I'm trying to deny anybody anything, but it's, if you want to look at the overhead picture, there's more, more important places to put sidewalk. I guess it's my general view, I mean, nothing more would be nicer, to have a nice sidewalk from Jimmy's, up to the top of the hill, and eventually, you know, straighten it all the way, the rest of the way down, but then you're ignoring spots on Zell Street that sees more people, there's spots on Franklin Street that see more people, there's, you know,
Right.
First Street, Second Street, you know, this is, this is, I guess, one of the things you...
How much would it cost to do the, what you were just said, the other option, how much would that cost, like, as far as temporarily? And then, like, once we get some of the major routes that are used, so that we can have an actual sidewalk, um, I mean, because where does it end on Leavenworth, where does the sidewalk end, you know?
It ends at, um, Cross from Hemlins, in the, one time it did go into the front lawn of that yellow house a little bit, and all over the years, grasses grow over and it's, you know.
It's kind of, you could find it through.
Yeah, it's kind of like one of them things, it's just, it's...
As the road slid and covered it.
Yeah, that's kind of just one of them things.
And if you keep putting sidewalk in, I mean, it's going to keep eroding, and it's going to be a waste of money, it's going to be walked away, so...
It's, I mean, it's like everything else, it's, I...
Would you be able to just, for time purposes, would you be able to find out how much it would cost to do that, and do the curbing, uh, like you were saying, and see what cost effect, how much more cost effective that would be? But it's, but you're still saying though, that there'd still be a spot though where kids or adults, whoever, can walk up and down that?
Yes, there would be a, a white line that had to be drawn down through there. I don't know, you know, I guess another thing we'd have to investigate is the liability.
I can guess that.
I mean, if it's, if it's a designated walkway, I guess it doesn't matter if it's blacktop or cement. To me, in my eyes, it's the way I look at things, I mean, if it's a designated walkway, then it's a designated walkway. The only other advantages of your sidewalk is six inches wider than the road, if somebody comes down and loses control, and there's somebody walking on the sidewalk, you've got six inches to stop from somebody from, from hitting someone. What in the same aspect, if you come over the hill fast enough and you wipe out, ten chances for one, six inches of sidewalk is probably not going to make...
Any difference.
That much difference.
Just going to tear a tire off?
You know, I mean, this is where I'm at with that project. And I will, you know, I will, I can get, you know, I can get adjusted on the prices and things back and forth.
If you can see how much it would cost to do that, and also how much it would cost, estimate for actually to put a sidewalk up there. See, see what the actual difference is. Appreciate it.
No problem. Okay, I'm done.
You're done? Um, Gene?
You ain't got nothing to do, Gene.
Oh, yeah, you got...
Just a couple minor things.
Minor stuff.
Uh, one thing I was going to mention to Jen, down in front of Mathias's building, where that fire hydrant is?
Yes, sir.
That's been wet when it's been real dry, I don't know if it's leaking, but there's been a puddle there.
Okay.
So...
Bradley, go check it out.
Uh, last meeting, you guys okay to set up a new account for the, well, attorney?
Sounds like you're going to.
Uh, and you transferred to five thousand? I'm going to have to adjust that, because I see that there is a voucher this evening for nine hundred and some dollars for him. So, we won't use all that five thousand in personal services this past fiscal year, so I may only transfer four thousand, whatever I need to cover his voucher this evening.
Okay.
I do need a motion now for this budget that we're in currently, to transfer the five thousand from content, from his contractual to personal services.
I thought we did that.
The one you made last month was for next year, last year.
Oh, okay.
So now I need one for this year, budget that you're adding up.
Okay, can I have a motion to transfer from the contractual, from what is it?
Contractual point four for the attorney, to point one, personal service.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll start it.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any votes? Nope, you didn't have a security proof.
If there is any contractual next year, we won't have any of the money in the budget for that. So you'll have to come up with some money someplace.
Okay.
What is the, to the problem?
Have we, have we gotten a bill from you yet, Gene? For, for last month, how many hours you have?
The number of hours that I spent, no, I haven't given you a detail on that yet. But I have an, an uncompressed listing of all the time that I have spent, I just haven't written it into a pretty form to look like, a voucher that I would send a client. Just rough estimate, I guess, last month. For time that the board has approved for me to spend against the sixty on the contract, we're probably talking somewhere between five and ten, because it includes time spent during meetings. That would be my estimate, but I'm honestly not certain without checking which way the time goes, which part of it's going to count against the sixty, and which part's going to be brought to you, you know, free. Which, there's plenty of that.
As much gratis as you've got, five thousand.
I understand.
If you serve, how many hours?
I don't know what you're being about, I know it's five thousand personal services. I don't know, the quantity being there.
So the... So...
What's your question?
The money for that voucher is for...
That was contractual from the, the Saratoga Springs Annual Conference for NICOM.
Right.
Which I was planning on attending with the mayor, and only a day before the, the conference, he was in his accident, so I ended up driving out myself.
No, my question is, so that voucher for mileage or whatever, comes out of the same money that you get paid for your sixty hours? Is that what I'm understanding though?
I don't know, that's contractual, right?
Contractual, which you don't have for this year coming, coming fiscal year, I don't want to mean currently.
Okay. Thank you.
My next thing is, I was reading the May thirtieth meeting, and budget wise, I'm a little concerned, because I, I'm not quite sure, are you looking at hiring two individuals, a water operator and a GPW, because?
Do you want us to get started now, or?
Well, I don't know, not really, no, no.
Okay.
No.
Because my concern is, we didn't, we don't have that budget in.
No.
Right, you didn't realize that.
Yes, it's only still three people.
Yeah, okay. I, I, by looking at this, I wasn't sure, so I just wanted to mention that budget wise, we don't have that.
Yes.
Okay.
That's, yeah.
Okay. Um, I see it's down the list further, but not knowing how far you're going this evening.
Yeah, I don't have any...
I, I see you appointed Bo as deputy mayor, but I need a certified, a copy of the minutes saying he's authorized to sign on the different accounts, and then, Bo, did you get my email, are you going to be able to stop into the bank?
Yes, I'm going to try my hardest to get this.
I believe all the signature cards are ready, I believe, so if you can stop in, just see one of the cards.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, is there, we have to make a resolution for the signatory on the accounts, right?
Yes.
Alright, so can I have a motion to author, to add Bo onto the signatory for the accounts for the village?
I'll make it, but, I mean, it isn't, it isn't a costless, right?
No.
It's just for a hillside.
Right.
Yeah, it's just taking, replacing Tom with Bo.
Right. Just making sure.
Yeah.
I'll start it.
Alright, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? It's unanimous, carried and approved.
Um, I'm starting to make the motion?
Worked it. And then Jason, so...
Okay, I got you.
Um, I also see down here on the list, someplace I saw, under correspondence about the FEMA, that's what I sent an email out one year before.
Asked about that more.
And I see they just sent you a letter.
Okay.
Nice to...
That's for what we already received.
Hopefully received.
Correct. Do you get to receive any new, new folders, you've already received two?
Refunding of bonds. Okay, they originally was going to refinance, refund, whatever, more bonds than what we are ending up doing. The one bond has a callable feature in it, which if they use that bond, would put us out longer period of time. So they did away with refunding that bond. So now we're refunding basically two bonds, one's a water bond, which has an A and B issue, that's going to be refunded, and the bond which is currently at our bank for the highway department, that's going to be refunded. One thing I want to verify is, I have to sign the paperwork for this.
Yes.
And I'm not sure, in the original resolution, did it authorize me or the mayor? Because before I sign it, I want to make sure I'm authorized to sign it, representing the village.
I think we went with the mayor.
I think that's what, yeah, with Jeff Smith, yeah, it was with, when he was here last month, it was myself, and then when we got off the call, they said it was you that would be signing it, uh, what, that was Roosevelt McCross that we talked to, that I said that correct? Can I have a, um, motion to authorize Gene to sign off on the refunding of the bonds?
I'll make it.
Second? Alright, so work made the motion, uh, Jason second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, carried and approved.
Uh, they've sent off some paperwork over the weekend or Friday night, I guess, today.
Yeah, was it?
And I got it today. Preliminary official statement, which I went through, I got five or six different questions for them. I sent emails out, but the one guy that I need to talk to is at a conference for two days.
What they, uh, what was it, was it what, S and P, S and P, yeah, what we received today was S and P from Tim Daly, right?
Yes, that, that's what we received today.
Yes.
Which one is that?
This is the Ratings Direct Summary Cataractus Village New York General Obligation.
They've got the A minus?
Oh, we got A minus on our ratings, yes. But I, like I said, I do have some question as far as the bond amount, um, I don't, do you have a chance to go through it tomorrow?
I read what he was saying, um, and I, I, I think I got an understanding of what he was, with the figures that he was trying to say, but in the end, you got two different numbers. You have nine hundred and eighty, it's an eight thousand dollar difference, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
What our debt currently shows is nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand on the two bonds that they're refunding, they're making the bond to nine hundred and eighty thousand. So I got a question there.
Is that what Matt that responded today?
Matt didn't respond to it, unless I was after three, after three, I don't check this email. So, I don't check. You always had a comment on it, I don't know if you got this or looked through it, but you questioned the fact that Pine Valley Central School?
Was listed as a village school.
And it's still, is in this...
Is it still in there?
Still in here. They have the natural gases provided by New York State Electric and Gas, which it does come in on that end of the town, I believe.
But we have...
And up here, they have fuel. So I'm questioning that. Closing, we're looking at later on this month, uh, the one email I see says something about June thirtieth, but I believe they were looking at sooner than that.
I thought they were saying, some, June seventeenth is sticking in my head for some reason.
So, once we get all these questions answered, hopefully this goes smoothly, I won't guarantee anything. Because one thing I'm not quite sure is, is looking like they're not making payments until two thousand sixteen.
So are we not going to be making any payments until then?
I have to say, I don't honestly know. That's one of my questions that I sent to Matt today. So I'm questioning that. So hopefully, he'll either get back to me, it did say that he checks his email, so hopefully he'll get back to me tonight or whatever at the moment.
Now, all in all, this is saving the village sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, is that right? Total.
Yep.
Means what, about five thousand a year?
I sent out copies of the tax freeze that we did, um, Dan came down and we filled that out, and I believe everybody should have got those attachments.
Yep.
If you have any questions, let me know.
Have you heard anything back from that?
Haven't heard a word, haven't heard a word. I'll be starting to work on the annual report here sometime this month, so let's just let you know. And that's it, unless anybody has any questions.
Do you want me to download everything to my computer?
Wow, you're crazy.
Wait, it's two days.
Yeah, we had a, what, we just had two conference calls, one with S and P, and the other one with Roosevelt McCross, and I'm glad you were on that one with Roosevelt McCross, because they're like, oh, it's similar, it was nothing similar. Uh, than what we got rated, um, and what I forward everybody was for the, why we were rated as an A minus, is predominantly the average median for the village, as far as residents and the economy itself in the village. So, as always, that's what we really, really need to start taking ourselves into getting businesses in here, how to increase industry, I think that's why I like the, you know what Mr. Lefebvre said about the, the old elementary building, if we could have that be a lab, set up more residency, we have, we're going to have houses for sale, we're going to have tons of stuff going up. If we can have, if we can have businesses in here, that's, that's the main thing, hopefully we can make something happen with that.
And one last thing, I know you've got, been talking about the senior center.
Yeah.
There is approximately nine thousand inter-reserve account that we put aside for that building.
Can you explain, so when Mr. Collins was here, he was saying in regards to senior building, that it's, it's, it's a great building, it's super sound and all this, however, though, I mean, John, John, you said that that building is in very rough shape.
We, um, I think a couple of years ago, I believe the, the, um, board was asked of him to get somebody to go down and look at that building, get an opinion of it, and then he had Mark Perchard go down and look at it, and he said it's just, it's just not worth, you know, he said one night, Mark figures he can stick a screwdriver through that black wall anytime he wants, between the two buildings, I mean, it sees absolutely no daylight. So it's wet, it's damp, I mean, it's hard to heat, it's... You've got asbestos, here we go, I mean, where do you, you know, I, I get both lodges, I really do, but it's...
We went down there, it's in sad shape, that's why the, me and the wheels is pulling out, they're...
But they're going with Luther, or the, no, the Mathis.
Roberts, yeah.
Wait, Roberts, or they going in one across the street?
No, they're going down one.
They're going to, uh, Roberts, right?
Down by Burks, so.
Oh, they are, I thought they were...
Well, they've got to have a meeting, and their meeting is Wednesday night, and I had a conference call with the two girls, um, Kim and... What's her name? Uh, is it, she's the head honcho there.
Kathy?
Kathy. Bottom line, they're pulling, there's too many issues, that's just a tip of the iceberg, um, that's going to cost way too much. I would think that asbestos is a big one, if you go into it, ten grand, I mean, it'll scratch the surface, and that's just the asbestos.
The business is just a hell area.
I would auction it off myself. We don't want to demo it.
No, we don't have the money to, I didn't realize.
Somebody may come in and run through something with it, I would throw that out there.
What, do, um, how does that work with the asbestos?
How? Well, if they auction it, if somebody bought it and auctioned, they would assume all that, yeah, you got to let them know, but I've done some asbestos abatement, and it's not, I mean, that's great work, that's... We're glad, there's a lot of issues with that right now.
So are we able to do like, close bids for it?
I don't know.
I don't know. Do you know how the property, does anyone know how the process works?
For selling a derelict property?
Yeah.
This is owned by the village.
Yeah.
I'm just making sure, because I, the beginning of the conversation, people were on the same page, and I wasn't, so I'm making sure that I'm understanding what you're talking about. Yes, you can do closed bids for that, you would have to publish a notice for it, so that people would notice, submit something for the bid. I believe you have to publish a notice, but I can check on that, because obviously you don't want to spend money to put a notice on the paper if you don't have to. And you would want to specify what all the conditions of the bid are, and so, what we're saying, you have to reveal that there is asbestos there, yeah. Anything that you know to be a condition of the property that's a flaw, and then you receive the closed bids, and you go through them according to a procedure that you specify.
Can you include in there, like, you want, within the timeframe to have, I mean, I know what you sell, it's up to whoever to do whatever they want, but are you able to sell it?
What's your plan for the property, yeah, you can.
Like that, you're going to fix, that you're going to fix this up and...
But then the question is, how do you enforce it once you sell the property? Then you would have to put a lien on the property while you sell it to them, and you don't release the lien until they put the, whatever the necessary work into it is.
Too many contingents.
Or it looks like they're still in process of doing it.
But I think that's something that needs to be done, I mean, you look at a lot of these older buildings, I mean, they're just, it's a, it's an absolute eyesore, and even that one alone is an eyesore, and if, if we're going to sell it, I don't care what we get out of it, it's just like, it's a turn it into something decent or something usable, and, and not being ice, I mean, it looks...
Right. We were, we were going down in the basement. You know, there's paint on the basement walls, but, you know, who's to say that the paint... Which while we're on the subject, I know it's down for this to wrap up, so I don't forget, when I did speak to them, that's two issues, was the gas line being out of spec.
Yeah.
And then the asbestos, but they have new regulations now from the state, uh, they're going to get yearly audits. That's another reason why they're, they're pulling out.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Figure out what we make on it and rent, and you take, like you said, what was it, two grand, something like that with the utilities?
The twenties, I think, were like twenty-three hundred?
We make, we make thirty-three off of it, plus insurance.
Walter, that thin, isn't our gas bills in the winter, like, this was a hellacious winter, I mean, weren't they...
Well, that's another thing, in the wintertime, the weatherization that they got to do, all that, that's one of the main reasons they're pulling out, and that's why, they were already looking at the church anyway.
Oh, they have been.
They have, yeah, they were pulling out no matter what, uh, and what they wanted us to do, if we would, save them the hassle of the thirty day notice of all that. Like, we just basically write them a letter that says, you know what, we release you, so that they can move faster on it. Uh, I know the club was talking about, but that's not a place to do it.
You don't want to stake them down at the club.
Let the, let the church have it, they're putting in...
Well, they do it, it's in the morning, I mean, you got...
Well, no, but you got to remember, they've got supplies that they have to store, you know, to make their food and everything.
What's that?
Now you're going to tie up more storage space down at the club.
And the firemen really probably don't want it either, I don't think, with that.
Just as long as it stays in the community, and it's continuing to be able to...
Their alternative was to go, was to bust them away.
Alright, so can I get a resolution then to, uh, release the county from?
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
Full responsibility, yeah.
From the respons, for, for, was it a contract?
Made it, seconded it.
To four, go to three.
Rose knows what's going on.
Basically, like, it's like you're the landlord, so you give them thirty day notice.
Okay.
And we just...
They can leave us that.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, carried and approved. So how do we start the process in regards to that then? As far as to put it out on bid, and do we put that in the paper, or do we just...
We'll do some research on that.
Because that's the other thing I was going to say too, if you demo it, you'll have to bait it.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, God. Well, I didn't realize, A, how much demoing costs, and so I thought that was, I sound like an absolute idiot, and I said, well, that's demo of a building.
You have to bait the asbestos to, to demolish it.
You're going to get all that, demolishing it.
Alright, um, Rose, can you put that on, um, continue to keep, uh, well, I guess it would be considered new business, because we're not going to do the rental anymore from the senior center, um, but to see about doing a bid process for that?
Okay.
Uh, Gene, do you have any thoughts?
No.
That's it.
Alright, uh, let's see here, events, community picnic, I think we pretty much discussed that, is any, if nobody has anything else to add that we can do for it?
What days the truck got to be there, and what time?
Uh, I would say...
Fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth is the picnic, I think.
Saturday's a week, though.
August?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, Friday, Saturday, Sunday is fourteen, fifteenth, sixteenth.
I would say Saturday, right? I mean, I, that's what, I'll probably be there all day on Saturday, and...
That's it, all three days.
You say fifteenth?
Huh?
Just fifteen.
Fifteen. Alright, who else?
That's the community picnic, yeah.
Um, Jo, or Rowett, Rose, um, would you be able to follow up with Hannah tomorrow in regards to...
Hannah?
Hannah?
Hannah.
Hannah from Graves, in regards to that issue for, uh, the youth council, is, just to see if you can, or if you could just have me, remind me to give her a call.
Okay.
Remind me to give her a call and see what she says, and we can move forward with that, so that these guys can appropriate the budget for that, or... Remind me to give her a call and see what she says, and we can move forward with that, so that these guys can appropriate the budget for that, or Stacy can all of them. Uh, there's nothing else, so the finance for senior citizens, right?
No, I've pretty much covered the seniors.
Yeah, we've pretty much covered that. Uh, ambulance, anything to report?
Um, they're having an issue with contractor that was supposed to finish the stone and brick work on the front of the building, um, and was supposed to be done by the end of May.
Yeah.
Um, he never showed up, um, as far as I've been, if I remember correctly, what they told me, he didn't even order the materials. Um, so last night I was told it was that it is in the hands of the lawyer, so.
Materials there, materials sitting there, that's a lot of stuff is sitting out there.
Ken just told me that.
Some out there last Thursday.
Supposed to do.
Oh, see, I haven't talked to him.
They're supposed to start breaking.
Must be the lawyer, must be the lawyer, you have something going on. I don't know why they're supposed to do that.
Where are you standing with them on the wa- on the sidewalk, you know? Are they gonna start putting in the sidewalk?
Yeah, I think that's the.
They're coming to seal the parking lot.
Yeah.
This week or next, they're gonna seal the parking lot, and then they're gonna get blocked up and then do, finish that grass section here.
Wonderful, good.
As far as I know, that's not what they told me to do. They still undo that, uh, brick for the flag pole and all that, so.
But they're still putting in the sidewalk and where it ends?
Yeah, they're also still taking orders, so it's, they still taking orders for that.
Is that everything for the ambulance? Uh, Rose, what do you got for clerk, getting all that?
Um. Wait, uh, working on tax collection, water and sewer collection, we're getting ready to prep for the sewer benefit bills, um, before I run them, I just will need to, I'll need to know about if the vacancy is staying a vacancy, or if you have someone that you're looking to appoint sooner than later, because it's letterhead, and so I just need to know what I'm putting in the letterhead, um, to run the sewer benefit bills, and then those can get, um, ready for mailing. Um, I have a conflict on June seventeenth, um, we are open until one o'clock on Wednesdays, and I have a county association meeting, it's one of our official quarterly meetings. Um, it's in Salamaca, so I was wondering if I could leave early that day at twelve-thirty, I don't have deputy coverage that day. Um, so I was just wondering if I could close the office a half hour early, put a sign up that I'm, um, I left early for the county.
I don't see an issue of just posting that you're gonna be lea- that the office be closed a half hour early that day, for Wednesday, does anybody else? I mean, if you post it now, that June seventeenth will be closed at this time, I mean.
I guess I wanted to see what the, if that was okay with the board.
Does anybody have any chance of that?
That's fine, Rose. I don't have any problem.
No.
And then we just have the three, three water things?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, Mr. Johnson, uh, on waiver lease sent us uh, correspondence that, uh, Cory promised not to have to pay overage for running water. Um. I don't know, if you, if you don't, my thought on this is if, if you don't wanna pay for, for overage on running water, then take the chance of not having, of having your pipes freeze and, and break, I mean, what do you?
Do you know about the ad, about, anything about this?
Yes, sir.
What you're gonna hook?
I, uh, my, well, all I can tell you is Cory told. You're upon. Doug Johnson. There's one of them, not worry about the overage, leave your water running.
I mean, like Superintendent promised it, we'll give it.
Well, he was, well, I mean, you put, if you look back at last year, the same quarter, he had sixteen thousand, so there's a three thousand dollar, or three thousand gallon difference. I, I would assume, and I mean, we do.
I don't know.
Rose, you know how much it's amount to, a three thousand gallon difference of overage?
Nine seventy-five.
Yeah, saber split and hairs there.
Nine dollars and seventy-five cents?
It's three twenty-five per thousand over the eight.
Peanuts, man.
All right, well, of course, we gotta honor Cory's word then, but going forward, though, I would have to state, though, I mean, either you choose to risk having your water being frozen and then dealing with not having water, and going through all of that hassle, or you take the necessary precautions such as having your water trickle and pay the couple extra cents, I mean, it's, it's a no-brainer for me on how I look at it, and it shouldn't be that the village has to eat it, it's.
Well, can it be a provision that's put into the new water law that we will come and we will follow your water service the first time? And it will be a nominal fee there. It will be nothing, we will do it. If you don't let your water run and it freezes again, then it's, it's a fee, it's so much to come back.
Can we do that, though? I don't, I didn't catch.
I think it's in the new water law.
In the new water law, there's a provision for repairs, and it's billed at actual part cost and there's a, a flat labor fee per hour.
Right, but what John's saying is, and I believe it is in the new water law that we're looking at, that the first time it freezes, the village will come on thought for.
Typically, the village wouldn't do that because it's private property that's being.
Because they tell you the labor on it, and if it freezes again, then it's a cost to the homeowner to get it on.
What did you say, Tim?
Okay, uh, the village is acting as a utility provider, so it's private contract law that typically prevails, but because you're a government, you still can't gift public funds. So if it's coming only out of the water budget as a contract, you might be able to do that if you choose to, but I would advise against it for the possibility that the comptroller comes in and says that you're gifting public funds.
That makes absolute sense, I mean, when it starts to freeze.
For the one freeze, I, as whether you're going in and doing it for free versus for what it actually costs in terms of time and labor to do it, that has to be on the individual homeowner, because they're the ones who own the pipes from the water box, the water shut-off box to the meter, they own that pipe. It's in their property. Now, it's whether they paid for it because the village went and put them all in at the same time, and then did it as a special assessment on the taxes, but those pipes are still property owners.
Well, and, and some of them, some of them have been froze from the road to the house, some freeze from the shut-off to the road. And it's discovered this two years ago, we're beating our head against the wall, and we dug it up with the road, and we took the copper apart from the shut-off box, and we turned it over, and there was no water, we said, ha, here lies our problem. Karma Street, it's a no-brainer, you go down there and dig it up and you go off to the main, for some reason, that street lies freeze up. Um, there's some houses you can reach, that I don't see there's, there's, uh, Jerry Harvey's place, we walked in there, we started in there, and we were there for, I think, twelve or thirteen hours with a welding machine and never received a drip. I believe Allegheny come with their machine like we have now, within forty-five minutes of heading water.
What is it specifically stating in the new water law? Is that we already, the first time that the village will cover it? Is that?
In the new water law, I believe that's what it's.
I mean, I think, honestly, it's, I guess it's not being, I don't want them to say you're playing hardball, when you tell somebody, say, look, we're gonna do this for free this time, but I guess, here, here, here's the question I've got to ask.
Yeah.
When all boils down to it, I walk into the house, I know these houses I've done, and I can do from the house to the road.
Yeah.
Where's it frozen? Tell me where that water is frozen. I can estimate within maybe ten feet. Because it will go, I mean, you can shove that down that line, lickety-split, there's spots of it in the line, you'll work a little bit. Is that a little tink in the copper? Is that where the ice starts? I mean, when you actually get the hard ice, you can feel it go. So now what are we supposed to do? When we get all set and done, are we supposed to put a little tape mark on this, pull it out, measure it? Go out and measure from roughly the house to the curb box to say, because if our responsibility is from the main to the, to the curb box.
From the new law?
From the new law, so you are going to thaw somebody's water, and if it's froze on the other side of the curb box, if it freezes again, technically, that's not their responsibility, but.
If it's at our, our end, they'll eat the cost of it, but if it's at their end.
But I guess what I'm saying is, and I would think you would have to agree, what I'm saying is, if you come in here and I, I said, okay, your water froze, we come thaw it, it froze again, we're gonna charge you, pick the number, two hundred fifty dollars to come in and thaw your water. Okay. The guy comes in with a lawyer and says, tell me where it was, exactly where it was frozen, was it froze on my side of the line?
It's gonna cost them more than two hundred fifty dollars to obtain a lawyer.
I'm just, what I'm saying is, this is where you're at with this. You've got to be able to prove yourself to say that's your responsibility, or it's the village's responsibility.
Well, that's why we're gonna have a public hearing that from the box to.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, I can't, I, I, and I'll tell, I'm not gonna lie for no way, I'm not gonna stand here and say, yeah, it was frozen, it was frozen on this side of the surface. I'm not gonna stand here and lie about that, because I, number one, I'm lying about nothing, and it's, it's, what I, I guess what I'm trying to say is, that you can't hundred percent prove, you know, there could be a little ice here, the shut-off is here, but it could be froze back to the main, and from here to the main is our responsibility. What I'm saying is, how can you, in theory, I can say, hey, if it freezes again, it's gonna cost you, but how can you? I don't know the exact words, I guess I, I, well, I can do some other words, but what I'm saying is, how can you prove a hundred percent where that line is, where it's frozen?
This new water law states, it says, in the event the water main or service line freezes between the main and curb box, the village, if possible, unfreeze the main or service line. Once water is passing through the line again, the customer shall be responsible to keep water flowing to prevent the line from freezing again. With such, the village would only bill the customer a minimum charge until the village water department contacts the customer and lets them know that service has returned to a normal condition. If the service line refreezes before this happens, the customer is responsible for all costs to thaw the line again.
Okay, that's, I've, that's already in the law.
Perfect, that's understood.
But it's just got, I mean, so would you say, I mean, bottom line, the twenty of the pipes freezing though is because you're not having water continually trickle through it, correct?
That's it.
So then, where, why doesn't common sense here prevail that, hey, you know what, after a month of constant freezing, maybe, just maybe, I oughta have my water running, so I don't go through this nonsense?
Well, there's one way around it, I mean.
That's where the question comes in, that's where the question comes in.
That's when they're getting billed minimum for letting it trickle, so that it doesn't freeze.
Right, they're getting billed minimum, they're not getting billed.
So, basically, if you wanna get around that, and I guess maybe it's, I don't know if it's right, but I guess you can come and say, it's, if we gotta come back, it's two hundred and fifty bucks, or if you let your water run, it's gonna cost you.
But you gotta, you gotta do it the right way, because people are gonna say, oh, I had my water trickle, and I have twenty-five thousand gallons of water, when in fact, it's just a regular usage it could be, I mean, I'm just throwing a number out there.
Well, no matter what you do, and how you do it, and no matter how you turn it, and how you look at this, how you look at this from the top to bottom on the top, it's, somebody's gonna argue with you. Now, it's Carrie Austin, Carrie Abner say anything? She was told the same thing, to let her water run until she was told to shut it off, and there would be compensation or whatever, but she didn't.
Look, I think this is where something comes into play, that we live in Western New York, it snows, it gets cold in winter, it freezes, you have your water.
Then what are you doing if, for instance, some of the, when you, when we had a hose going from one resident's house to another resident?
So is that because, again, that resident didn't have their water run?
It was froze out underneath the road, I believe.
Well, now, the, well, they're, okay, now what do we do about that? I go to, I go to, uh, Horst House, says, hey, guy next door's froze, I got like twenty more to do, it's gonna be a couple of days. Can I run a hop and pecks from your hose bed over there to Peter's house? And he says, go ahead, that household's using water through his meter.
Right.
Should he receive compensation, or should we take what his normal rate is in the other non? Did he agree to it? Well, what if he doesn't ask yet? Well, am I gonna compensate for this? What's your answer?
No.
So what do you do? Do you say, okay, we'll read your meter now, and when we read meters in the next quarter, we will figure out what that usage was, we'll knock that usage off your bill, but we're gonna add it to the neighbors'.
No, it's just too comp- too complicated. If you want, the neighbor wants to agree with it, that's his, that's his.
Well, yeah, but wait a minute, you're, you're not thinking this right, if it's froze under the road before the curb box, that's our line. So now you're taking water from the neighbor.
Supplying water or something, I mean, you can't just prorate a neighbor's water to.
If you're using their water to supply another residence, how do you screw the neighbor?
It's not us agreeing to it, it's the neighbor.
Right.
So you're saying the neighbors should go without wa- or the residents should go without water?
But Jason's saying when it's the village that's responsible for the freeze, because it's past the point where it's the person's frozen line, that's why, I think, I think there's a, there's some understanding.
Basically, it's in the water law, correct, that if you let the water run, you get billed minimum?
Normal.
So if you, if you let, if you let somebody hook into your house, you're basically saying that you're letting water run?
Yes.
Because you've got to leave that water run out that hose will freeze.
Right.
Mr. Freddy used to like to do that to us every other day. But which, that's fine, I mean, people, problem with, with a lot of it is, and you will find it with older people, it's not people that are, you know, from, say, thirty to about fifty, it's the people that are, are, that are older, that have been around a long time.
Yeah.
Water's precious to them, water is a concern.
Sure.
I, I've seen people in various, also this village, back when I first started working here, we would follow out a line sometimes once a place a day. Leave the water run, you'd walk around the doors, you'd draw and turn water off because you're wasting water, and that's the way a lot of people are, they just will not let it run because it's wasting water.
Then they will have to eat the cost at some point in time, though.
Well, that's, but that's what I'm telling you, that's what you, you've got to, the whole rule of thing that's how we water.
Well, that's what we're gonna have a public hearing in regards to, you know, but I mean, at some point in time, common sense just has to take over besides, well, what if this, and what if that, and what if this, it's just, this is, this is how it is, it's pretty black and white, really, at least that's my, how I'm processing it. If others don't get it, I understand, but we can, that's what the hearing's for, so that they can understand and come to grips with how everything is set. It's not to, it's not to screw anybody over it, or to make people pay more, but it's, I mean, water is expensive, I mean, for, for crying out loud, look at what we're just trying to do to, with our transmission lines, or what we wanna do with phase two, we haven't even got a phase one yet.
But the sad part of this in the public hearing, and not to be mean, but how many people do you actually think you can see here?
Well, hopefully, a lot of people will be here.
It'd be nice to see, uh.
Well, because you gotta post it.
Well, you gotta post it, but you'll find that's.
They always do.
I'm going to the pool, I'm gonna go to this, never mind.
You know what, they don't have the right to, to complain at that point in time when they had the opportunity, you know?
You say it's ten dollars, is what Mr. Johnson wants.
They will, if, if they're basically complaining, saying whatever, to be able to look at facts, because that happens all the time. It, it does, but I mean, we can't concern ourselves in, in regards to that, we, we follow the law, we give everybody the opportunity.
Well, in the same aspect, maybe in the next water bill, there should be certain highlights of the new water law sent in with the new water bill explaining something, I mean, you can't, I cannot. You know, it's probably, you're not gonna saw down a tree to send everybody a complete copy of this water bill, but there's certain highlights of that water bill that probably should be sent to everybody and say, you know, these are the certain highlights, if you want a full copy of this, please contact a clerk, she will send you a full copy, but if you send the major highlights of how things.
That's a good point.
Are, it's like when you blow, put all these new meters in, it's, okay, you're allowed one freeze up, if you freeze next week, it's gonna cost you. And you're gonna get, I didn't know that.
That's why I think.
So you have to regurgitately do this at least once a year.
I personally would rather give them the ten dollars that it's gonna cost.
Yeah, then, then, it's, hey, these guys that one time, and then have, at third rate, have to go with all, you know?
I mean, there's, there's some things that are.
And if it freezes on the village end every time, then it's gonna cost us way more money in the long run.
Right, but we can discuss more of water law, 'cause it's ten thirty, and we're not even gonna get to that. I'd like to wrap up committees, and then we'll have to set another date to finish up the rest of everything.
You've basically gone through all business and reports.
Oh, we gotta look at correspondence.
Correspondence and some of new business.
Uh, policies are.
Are we gonna do anything with this then? Are we, uh, should we make a motion or something about what we're doing with these three individuals?
Yeah, I just, I need to know what we're doing with the three.
Would these three, if the three people come forward, that Cory promised them not to have to pay overage?
We all honor that.
Uh, yes.
So can I have a motion?
So I just need to know what I'm reducing them to.
Reduce it to?
The overage.
I would say that no, because Mr. Johnson was at sixteen thousand last year, so I can say that three thousand previous would make sense. Um, so I would say reduce it down to sixteen thousand, wouldn't that mean?
So Johnson reduced to sixteen?
It's a matter of like five dollars, I think.
I would reduce it to the minimum myself, how, how do we know he didn't do something in there, buy an empty table washing machine, I mean, we don't know. For what's really gonna cost, what's it gonna cost us to drop him down the middle?
Uh, that would be eleven times three twenty-five. Thirty-five seventy-five?
Forty bucks.
Alright, so, what, are you making, what, you wanna see it then at the minimum of eight?
For those three individuals?
Well, it's two individuals and then another individual with a separate.
Well, Mister Barker went to eight.
Oh.
But I mean, I mean, people have to come forward, it's not just gonna.
Well, he said it was Carol Bonner.
Carol Bonner.
Bonner, Doug Johnson, and that's the other person that he remembers, what you said.
The other person that asked me was Holly Mansfield.
Holly Mansfield?
And I, you know, and I can't swear that she was told that, but she might have, I might have been backfilling, I might have been running parts, I might have been some other place else doing something else.
And if they don't read the minutes and they don't watch the video, then I guess then, that's on them, but.
Alright, so you're saying.
So reduce those two to eight thousand minimum?
Those three.
Well, who's the other one then?
Oh, Bonner, even though she hasn't come forward?
Right.
If she gets to water. Girls, does Carol get to water girls, does it go to her landlord?
What, you know the name of her landlord?
Tim. Retired. Tom Callow. There we go.
Alright, so then, alright, can I get a motion for the, for the three people that Cory told, that we were not?
I think it's, I think it's Carol Bonner.
I made the motion.
Okay, word made the motion, who can? Jason made the second, all in favor say aye, aye, nana's carried approved, there we go.
Okay, I'm, I'm really sorry you went too fast, I got word made the motion.
I second.
Jason second.
Yeah.
And we're, we're reducing those three people to eight thousand.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we're monitoring Mister Barker's meter for one month, once a week.
Okay, what about my third water issue?
Which is?
Which is Zibert, one eleven South Main Street. She came in with a water application. Um, I billed her. She was never turned on, she was finally turned on the end of May and I billed her again for June. She would like a break on one of those quarters, since she didn't have service for the March bill that she was billed for. Cory did mention that he had a hard time connecting with the resident in order to get the service on. But I, it, it really wasn't. I didn't process it well enough for me to give them a credit that they didn't have water for that March bill. Did I explain that very well?
So they didn't get, she didn't get turned on?
She didn't get turned on until almost June. I billed her for March. I had an application turning her on.
Do we have any readings? Cory's facing off of, uh.
Here, sir.
Credit, credit what you charged her, she didn't have it?
I don't know what the read would have been, I, I don't have that on the report.
She had it.
So.
I mean, cause no matter what, if you come in the middle of a quarter, you're still gonna be charged a minimal of the eight thousand, correct?
On the next bill, yeah.
Yeah. And that's pretty much what she had, right? Even though it was the tail end of it all, I guess?
Six days from the next bill. Is when she was finally turned on.
Is that known, like if that's when it really was turned on, or did she?
That's when the resident told me that it was turned on, was May twenty-fourth.
Okay, so.
Cause she, she come out, you know, I was under the impression of, cause I chased her, I think, I don't know how many times, six or eight, I think Joe chased her, Cory chased her, it was like. I want the water turned on, are you giving me all the amount? Nobody there? I'll be there at three thirty, you go there at three thirty, six, four o'clock, and. You know? For eight thousand, so.
So for a day to pay the damage?
You don't need to know. You want me to stay?
She had for six days, so she had for, for six days, is what you're saying?
Yes, but she was billed the entire quarter and it was a higher bill.
Well, if we're gonna take John's word, if they had it all the time trying to put it in, then let's just move on to this issue. I would say then, to go with essentially those like what, six dollars and forty cents a day for water? Throughout the course, so for, she had it for six days and had it adjusted to seven bucks? Does that sound better?
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't follow, what am I doing?
If you break down the, the amount of days that she actually had water.
Yeah.
And then, just.
Break out what her normal is per day and charge her for the six days.
That's what he's saying.
Yeah, just charge her the six dollars, seven bucks, whatever it is, and move on, it's.
Plus the state.
Huh?
Plus the state. Now, if you have fifty-five cents by now, it's ten.
Well, is it, wait, isn't it, is there a fee to turn down the water, is there like a thirty-five dollar fee or something?
Yeah, that would have been billed, that would have been billed in that March quarter.
So then, add the thirty-five, yeah, the thirty-five dollars plus the six forty is what her bill will be then?
Is the new water law a role in the fleet and done?
No, it's not.
No.
Let's get to that connect too.
Okay, well, I was just.
Tonight, I highly doubt that.
Skip the rose.
Yeah, then you can judge me, you could.
Put it in your mailbox.
Yeah, okay.
I appreciate that.
So are we gonna zip through correspondence, and then we can get out of here?
Gentlemen, I don't believe you actually had a motion on that bill.
Oh, can I?
We'll make the motion, we'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Word?
Yep. Service fee and the six forty.
Yep, all in favor say aye, aye, nana's carried approved, there we go. Oh, and then also there was. Mom, yeah, Johnny, we are.
I got that.
No. You need to stay with us for them.
Yeah, we stay.
Just right now.
Do military stuff? You know what they say about curiosity?
But if my, if my account is, the link was not working up there, which I haven't bought hearts there probably. Kind of call here, it's not killing.
I, you mentioned it before, that originally, after Sarah Thomas, there was, uh, a conference. Well, surprise, surprise, that's why I went out there. But one of the sessions of the conference, if the village is willing to adopt a unified solar permit application. People come to the village to say, hey, I'm gonna stick a solar panel on my house. The permit that NYSERD is putting out, the New York State Energy Research and Development Agency, I think is what that stands for. They said, hey, there's fifteen hundred and fifty municipalities in New York, they all have their own different permitting requirements, if we can get them all to without one permit. It'll be easy for people to figure out how to put solar panels on their houses. So, they put together a unified permit. And they're trying to get municipalities to use that permit by providing a small incentive, twenty-five hundred bucks going through the consolidated funding application process. The grant process that New York does, the CFA. That expires in September. If the board wants to try and get that grant, which I'm happy to write. Then the board would have to adopt the unified solar permit first, and then I'll write the grant for it. The permit, if you wanna see what it looks like, I gave this to Gary Breck when we were at the last meeting.
Did you hear anything back from him though?
I haven't yet, no. And I can try and call him to see if he has any issues on it. But he said nothing about the permit after I gave it.
Very good.
You still have it?
Yeah.
If you wanted to see what it covers. And so the things that are typically an issue for solar permits, is this thing going to be huge? Is this thing gonna cause your roof decay then? Is this thing going to be unsafe for firemen if there's a fire, is there a problem there? So this permit says, people get to put a roof panel solar installation if it's below a certain size. If they have, it's certified by their architect that it's not gonna make your roof collapse. That it's under a certain number of pounds per attachment point over the roof. That it's a minimum number of, I think it's one or two pounds per square foot over the entire group as a whole as well, and all of these other things. If the village chooses to adopt this permit, whether you think there's gonna be any solar permit applications or not, you can always later choose to get rid of it if you want. So I've drafted a resolution that you don't have to adopt if you don't want, but to consider. A resolution to adopt this permit. And what we would have to do is give it to Gary and keep it in the clerk's office so that if people wanted to put in a solar permit below a certain size, they have to fill out this permit. If they want. If the board chooses to adopt the resolution, that's what it will do. And if it, if the village does adopt the resolution, I will write the grant to NYSERD in order to see if they'll give us the twenty-five hundred bucks for it.
Twenty-five hundred bucks, I don't think nobody can say no to that.
And if you don't like the permit, then we can undo the permit and take it on. There's also a second thing that I'm not bringing you today, but also for energy, for electric vehicle charging. They want the local municipalities to incentivize electric vehicles for parking and putting in charging stations in houses. I know that everybody's doing that around here, but that's another twenty-five hundred bucks if you adopt a local resolution that provides some incentive to homeowners for. Knowing what the process is if they wanna put the two hundred amp charger in their garage, so their contractor knows what they would have to do. So I would come to you in the future on that, but, but two separate things, so just letting you know that that'd be on.
I think for five, for, for total five thousand dollars, Cory will be getting the money for them.
No, they could bring the, nobody's probably really ever.